The House of Representatives meeting in order, if you rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, please silence your phones and any electronic devices that you have. I seem to be the one that offends that. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? If so, is there any additions or corrections to them?
Move to approve minutes of the audit second meeting.
You have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second it.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, wrong at second, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes afoot, motion carries. Pass them down to the signed. County attorney, does anybody have any mail? One item of business real quick. Shirley did call me, tell me that she was going to be running 10, 15 minutes late. She's not home back from Indianapolis, so she'll be here shortly. Any mail that anybody wants to share? County attorney? How's Mr. Baker doing?
He is doing better, but still, yeah, out of the office, he won't be for a while. So right now, I'll just be acting as a go-between between you guys and him, and I'll help any way I can.
Okay, some of our fall wishes. Shirley's not here to give her committee report, anyone else from the committee, do you want to report anything, if you met at all?
No, we needn't.
And probably have nothing from the finance committee, since we're getting ready for county for our budget hearings, correct Dale?
No, we haven't had any budget finance committee meetings to report on.
Commissions representative. Mr. President?
Good evening. We had a very short meeting this morning, lasted 25 minutes. About the only thing of any significance that we did was the information left in your mailboxes and or emailed to you about the additional appropriation for the Indiana State Board of Animal Health for the tuberculosis testing. We did approve the contract of it this morning and signed it pending the council's appropriation of the monies. So if that's your pleasure, as soon as the monies are appropriated, we'll send that off to Board of Animal Health, and I'll keep you abreast of whatever they say. I don't, I haven't talked to anybody to have any more information that's more up to date than what you already have.
I understand that we can, you're gonna, you said you would have some contractual money that you could use, but you need to be reimbursed if that so happens.
Yes, we've got, we've got, we've only got a little, little under $72,000 in there. And last year, December, we caught, we, we made up a lot of shortfalls in some departments, as well as we get end-of-year stuff where people file claims toward the end of the year for things done, and we cannot go the balance of this year with 47, some odd thousand, we can't do that.
And I think some of them was like attorney fees from last year.
Yes.
Nobody had known about it. So I guess we can either, as a council, say, yes, we'll reimburse your fund, or we can advertise, because we can't really discuss it tonight, since we haven't advertised for it. We will be having budget hearings this week, so...
If you, if you saw the back, back page of one of the state's pages, it said that they will contact the DLGF and Office Management Budget to basically facilitate any additional appropriations. I don't, I don't know what that, what that entails, given our, given our situation right now with no additional appropriations. But I'm kind of guessing, my guess may be wrong, that since this is kind of an emergency situation, they may go ahead and approve it. But there's only one way to find out. But I really, gentlemen, I can't, I can't, if we pay for this now and get it off the shelf and get things going, we cannot finish out the year without the balance of that monies.
Frank, is that, ah, the way I read it, there were 74 cattle affected by this?
Um, herds.
Was it herds?
Herds, 74 herds.
74 herds?
Yeah.
Okay, 74 herds.
What makes...
Okay.
What makes this mean is that they've got 500 and some odd actual different cattle operations, small to large, in this, in this area. And Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't you tell me that they have expanded the, no. Dale looked on the state website, and they have expanded the radius to include basically, the edge of it is now State Route 44. So my, reading this, okay, and from what I've learned, it, everything's going to depend on what they find.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And the thing is, and the gentleman that I talked to at Board of Animal Health said the letter was a little ambiguous. They need monies now for what they're going to do, they're going to start as soon as possible through the end of the year. And they're also requesting that monies be budgeted for next year, because this is probably going to be a several phase or several years worth of studies to make sure that it, that it's kept in check, to what I'm assuming.
They, they have a window of six months on, on this right now, what we're doing, this for right now. And if they find TB in any of the cattle in that six-month period, they're going to shut us down, where like, if you want to send your animals to the fair or something, you're going to have to test them for TB, or you want to ship them someplace else, whenever they leave the farm, they'll be tested, and everybody will have to test everything.
I know some, some of you have or have had cattle operations, and I've talked to some other farmers, and they're, they're very concerned. That's, that's one reason why, I'm not a farmer, but I recognize that this is an important thing need to be done, which is why I contacted all of you as soon as possible, so...
Okay, I guess, I guess the question, Frank, is how many herds have we got in Fayette County that's got to be tested?
You're not going to test all of them, have you tested all?
There, I know, I don't know where else.
Have they gone down?
How many, how many, how many cities in the county are they going to test?
I heard something like 47 herds for that, what I heard was true, now I don't know.
But they're also, and again, I didn't get this straight from the Board of Animal Health, but I think that because deer and cattle share the same, same territory, same living room, so to speak, okay? It's transmissible from one to the other. So they're going to do extra permits for Fayette County, is my understanding, for additional deer. That is not official, do not take that to the bank. But that is my understanding, and that way, they're going to check the deer herds and see if there's, see if there's an incre, see what the, I guess they're going to have to establish a baseline, and see if that goes up or down, or whatever.
I guess, I guess the question that I have is, how do they, how do they recognize this $23,600? If we don't know how many were tested?
Well, they've, they've established...
And then next year, next year are we going to have?
The ones that they know have it...
Are we going to have...
They went to the butcher's.
So next, next year, we may have to budget $23,600, as I understand?
Yes, that's what it says. But also, fair...
That's just for his first test.
So everybody, so everybody knows, it does say it's an estimate. So if it turns out to be worse than what they anticipated, my guess is that they will, they will hire more veterinarians or specialists to do this kind of testing, and it could go higher, or it could be lower. But it does say estimate.
So the state pays nothing, then?
No, that's, I gave you a copy of the statute.
On the first one.
The deer hunters too, they're going to let them take two bucks and turn the first one into the biology of the Department of Natural Resources, where they need to tag, they go get another.
So this is another...
Cut the herds back and test them all at the same time, with the idea of this.
Just so the public's aware, this is another fine example of where the state imposes their will upon us and says, you know, when people tell us we have to live within our means, we're looking north of another $23,000, another $24,000, and $75,000, was it? $75,000 in popper attorney fees that we were hit with? And that's almost $100,000 in a year that we had budgeted for, that, you know, can't plan for that kind of stuff.
Another thing on that, they told us at the meeting down here at Brookville, that right now, it's the state that's involved. They said if it gets to be the federal government, then look out, because them guys come in and eat the nuts, you know? Have, they determined if it's been spread more than by deer, have other animals, like coyotes, raccoons? Coyotes, they don't worry about, coyotes are dead in...
Not, not to my knowledge.
They're dead in...
Is this the same as chronic waste disease, Mark?
Coyote gets, passes...
Different?
But they say what it is, is water, is what you think, of good things on both sides of the, what, of this branch of what they do. And that's why they're looking above side, because here, down, on to... What's the last county? Dearborn?
Dearborn.
Dearborn. Yeah, that's actually, the original went over into Ohio, slightly over into Ohio.
The map, the map shows basically all of Franklin County.
Yes.
And then now, probably half of Fayette County, it takes out corners of Rush, DeCader, and Union. So I, I have no idea if they'll expand the...
Are they going beyond the 10-mile?
Not yet.
Not yet? Well, the 10-mile went up into about the third, seventh, third?
If, if what I heard is true, and it's been increased to State Route 44, that would be beyond the 10-mile.
Yeah, that would be beyond 10-mile, yes.
But again, I'm not getting my information directly from State Board of Health, or Animal Health, even though I did speak to them, I called them about the contract, told them we were trying to get on this as quickly as possible, and he did tell me that some of the state officials had asked where we were on this, so...
Well, we need to borrow the money from the state, I guess.
Well, maybe we can borrow something from their $2 billion rainy day fund they're sitting on.
So Frank, let me ask this question. Is it, is it right now, the commissioner's intent to submit an additional appropriation request for this? So that the auditor can advertise it, and we can, after the 10-day period, we pass it on to the DLGF?
Yes, well, you can do it one of two ways. We can pay for it out of contractual services, and the additional appropriation can be, can be advertised, that way, that way, everything gets taken care of. However, however, since the additional appropriation would not be earmarked specifically, it would be earmarked for reimbursing us, however you advertise it, okay? Instead of paying for this, my guess is DLGF may not make the exception.
Well, I think they deserve to be tested.
I, I agree, I agree.
I agree with you.
And I, I will, I have Indianapolis tomorrow, but I will take the lady on here named Jeanie Dorfheim. I will call her either on the way to or back from Indianapolis tomorrow, and I will explain to her what we're doing, and ask if she can contact the DLGF, as the paper says, and see if they can expedite our request.
So we're going to hold off until we hear back from you?
Yes, I can, I can send all of you an email and a hard copy to the two of you, letting you know what to tell us.
You got money in your commissioner's budget, then to pay it.
He has $71,000 left, they don't want to...
How much?
71, but they don't want to take it from...
He wants to be paid back.
Well, yeah, because if the stuff popped up like last year...
But go ahead and say it.
How much are your attorney fees last year, John? How much were your attorney fees that popped up last year? Pretty excessive, wasn't it?
We had $15,000.
What's it to us? We don't have any bills yet.
I'm sorry?
We don't have any bills yet.
From?
No claims pertaining to this...
No.
...mobile...
And I honestly, I guess that's an oversight on my part, okay? So I probably should have put in an additional appropriation request, but I just, it's over.
Well, that's, that, we got plenty of time to take care of that, that's... Just to go through the motions with the additional request, I think serves its purpose. But we certainly know what takes this one way or the other. You're talking, you know, $8 per head to test cattle, is what the state will allow, plus $40, $40 per veterinarian visit to the farms.
And Ben's got to make two visits.
Takes two visits, initial.
I have, I have contacted the sheriff as soon as I contacted you, because I didn't know how quickly they would start. And obviously, there probably will be strange people on some farmer's land, so if he got calls, I wanted them to understand what was going on. The other thing is additional appropriation, I'm assuming you want us to put it into our contractual services, so because we're signing, we signed a contract, I mean, that's a logical place. But it will be exactly for this, this, this amount.
I think the statute reads, we have to create a fund.
Create a fund specifically for this?
I think that's the way I understood the statute.
Well, let's, let's simplify things, okay?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get through it.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen, or ladies?
Thank you. We have one item of old business that we forgot to take care of, and it was ordinance allowing a stipend in lieu of health insurance for Fayette County employees eligible for Medicare. And this is in regards to ordinance number 2016-05. So what this is doing is reducing some housekeeping from December that we let fall through the cracks. So, I mean, obviously, we have to take care of it, if we don't, then I imagine some people want to pay it back, which we don't want to do. Would that be kind of a correct assumption?
Yes.
So unless we want employees paying this back, which is not right, we just need to approve this and go through the formalities. We should have a copy in front, so... Is there any discussion, or someone wants to make a motion to approve it, or deny it?
This is something we, we were supposed to do several months ago. I'll move we approve ordinance number 2016-05.
We have a motion to approve ordinance number 2016-05. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You have a second, any further discussion? Not all those in favor of passing the resolution number 2016-05, super buck, saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Opposed, nay? Ayes afoot, motion carries. Send that down for your signatures. Thank you. Diana?
Every year, we're required by law to either approve or disapprove abatements. It's a compliance statement that they have to fill out each year. The county has one, it's Foulness Harm Supply. And according to their SB1 that they turned in originally, they have 15% more employees than they originally said they were going to have, and are paying them 12% more than they said they would pay them. All we need to do today is just approve this resolution, saying they are compliant with their SB1.
Well, that's all good news.
Yes.
They're exceeding everything, so that's good.
They're exceeding, yes.
That's awesome.
Who's the individual that went out and verified all this, that they actually have all that?
We don't actually go on site. There's a form that called a CF1 that they have to file each year by May the 10th. They have to file that form, and we get this information off that form.
This was for five years?
It was for equipment, and yet it lasts for five years. It was approved in 2014.
Make a motion we approve the resolution.
Motion to approve Ms. Wright's resolution for tax agreement?
I'll second it.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving, is there a resolution number?
Jane assigns those after they're approved.
Resolution, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes afoot, motion carries.
Have you made that motion?
I did.
Okay, and who's second?
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I voted on.
Well, sometimes I can't tell, I just hear.
You're normal, Mark, you know. That's okay.
I'm assuming everybody was in agreement with it? Okay, because there's only one person saying anything. All right, one other item of business. Jane brought this to Dale's mind attention, did you send an email to anybody else?
No.
The 2017 estimated property tax cap impact report for Fayette County. Basically, there's nothing, we just have to rubber stamp this and give it our blessing by not approving it, doesn't do anything. We're just going through the motions. This is Columbia Township, and this is what we do. Typically, we don't have a budget hearing at this point. We've done this in the past, school board, all that.
How, what copy do you got here?
It's a different look than what we've seen in the past.
This is, this is property tax, tax cap credits only. This is not the non-binding review. This is a review of the property tax cap impact. This is, this is additional that the DLGF created, especially for us, so we can hop through this year. So we'll hop through it, and we can say we did it. There's nothing we can change about it. That, this says that we saw these numbers and we are aware of them.
So, motion for...
Give it, give it a title, what kind of a title are we going to give this thing, Jane? Or we're going to call it, let me see that. The 2017 estimated property tax cap impact report for Fayette County. I'll move we approve this report. Yeah. Wouldn't be a bad idea for everybody to have a copy, take a copy of this.
Take it away to tomorrow.
I'm sorry?
This is tied to...
For tomorrow, yeah.
Yes, well, there were two things, one was maximum levy amounts, and then the other was property tax cap credits. So that's your maximum levy.
So we need you to send them once?
Yes.
So how's everybody staying today?
Do we have to approve this tonight?
We do? Need to get it done?
Yes.
And there's, and there's nothing, whether you approve it or disapprove, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
You can oppose it all you want, it's not going to matter.
They're just requiring us to review it.
Okay, Mark, you reviewed it.
I reviewed it.
Give it back. Give it back, he reviewed it. You know, made a difference if you reviewed it or not, so here.
So we have a motion to approve or to review?
Yeah.
You did, okay.
You have made the motion?
I'll second.
And Mark really for second. The only motion you forgot already. Mark, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. There's a second item. State of Indiana, Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, gentlemen. Basically, it's the same thing. Nothing you can do to change it, you can oppose it all you want, they don't care. So you just might as well go the flow.
So you don't need to review that?
You can, if you want.
To go do good, is it?
No. Don't hand it down here, David.
Well, it's, it's a report on the maximum levies.
Well, let's make the meeting last longer, so let's all review that.
There's a lot of pages there, Russ.
Yeah, we want to read them.
Russ has trophies and eating gravy, you got to get that done tonight. There you go.
Fine, Dale.
Review it. Speed read that, man.
Shirley review, she can read, she can read faster, not you. She's a big tennis player.
She's that pickleball player.
Oh, pickleball, that's right, opposed tennis. Opposed tennis. Anybody check out that statute, John Connor, boy, it looks awesome.
Those are going to be painted?
Spitting image.
I'd like a copy of that, too, for tomorrow, please.
Think that could be done, Jane? Can't review it down here.
Yeah, I didn't, because it was 25 pages.
I don't need one. You want electronic version, or you want it...
No, I want, you can print it both sides. To make that 13 pages?
Okay. I need to read that, so I can make a motion. Are we going to make a motion to approve this?
Yeah.
Okay. What do you want to make your motion be?
I'll move to approve the State of Indiana Department of Local Government Finance report on maximum levies for Fayette County.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yep. Oh, I was going to ask Dale if he can repeat that again.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the State of Indiana, Indiana Department of Local Government Finance report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes afoot, motion carries.
Wait for you, Mark.
Okay, Health Department.
Wait a minute, Mike, I got some new business, I'm going to bring it up under the faith services.
All right.
Okay, I have an additional request in our vaccination fund for $50,000. Since the beginning of the year, we have been reimbursed $82,895.09. $30,000 of that was an additional in April. So we're requesting $50,000 back of our remaining $52,000, so we can buy flu vaccines and finish out the year.
Just to refresh everyone's memory, I sat down with Paul the other day and talked about this. We've, we've already done this once this year. Earlier in the year, we did $30,000, wasn't it, Paul?
Yes.
This is money that the Health Department has recovered through their billing system. And the fact that we're now back to a second time this year, this time up to $50,000, is a testament to how good the Health Department now has gotten in billing. Before, before, we weren't able to do this. So the money that we originally appropriated, actually seed money for vaccines, they're billing insurance companies and Medicare, Medicaid too, right, Paul? Getting the money back, then you repurposing that money to buy more vaccines. But they, they can't repurpose it without our permission, and that's what we're doing, by re-appropriating, additional appropriating, the same money back out to buy more vaccines. And you are due for... And you are due for flu and pneumonia right away, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've gotten, well, we, we'll get shipments this week, and it's through the company we get our flu vaccine through. We have 30 days to pay, after the invoice, we have 30 days to pay it. So we should be getting that this week. So we'll owe that, and I think our flu this year will be a little over $36,000 is what we'll owe in flu alone. And then we have our back-to-school shots that are mind-boggling expensive, that we have to, to pay for, too. So we'll probably be back again next month or in October, or I guess March, next month is October, November, to ask for more.
Sure, as long as, as long as it keeps coming back, that's not a problem. Really, folks, this is how a health department is supposed to work.
So you really, this really isn't an additional, you're just-
Getting our money back.
Getting what you recovered already. We probably had for years, we kept hearing the song and dance that we're going to do it. It's working out.
For a long time, we were going to establish a billing system that was supposed to recover a lot of this money. And, and the takeoff on it was really slow. But they've really gotten good. And the way Paula explains it to me, Megan's heart down there is a real bulldog about getting the money back to insurance companies. Am I right, Paula?
She is.
Good. She's doing us a really good job down there. And the numbers we're seeing is a testament to just how well they are doing. So I'm, I'm very pleased with the way this has worked out. This, this is something we've never seen before, this kind of success.
Motion to approve?
Somebody.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor approving the additional for the amount of $50,000 for vaccines, they signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. That sounds good, thank you.
Next, with misdemeanor jail, and I think Sheriff's of the Union is on about it, Dale?
Yeah. We had this in front of us last month, and we wanted to call it a transfer rather than an additional. Jane, would you want to explain again why we, why we have to call this an additional even though it's within the misdemeanor fund?
Yeah, the money is already there, but because we had not appropriated the expenditure, even though that money's there and we're taking it from one account to another account, it can't be called a transfer. It has to be an additional appropriation and advertised for so many days before, prior to the meeting.
So, is that Paul?
Yeah, it's a similar thing.
It's really not, it's really not an additional expenditure to the County General Fund. It's, it's within the misdemeanor fund. And in order for the auditor's office to be legal and accounting, we have to call it an additional rather than a transfer.
And when he was here last month, he had someone had asked how much was in that account. At that time, there was $40,900, but he said he was expecting an additional $18,000, which we did get in August. So that account now has $59,000.
So anyhow, this is to pay medical expenses incurred at the jail.
You have a motion to approve it?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
There's a motion to approve, second, any further discussion? All those in favor approving this additional request for the jail amount of $20,000 for misdemeanor fund, they signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. And the last on our agenda would be the County Highway Department, Frank, do you know anything about this?
What is it?
Says, transfer being requested to pay Butler Fairman and increase in SINTAS.
That's for our PACER study we had done, was it $26,000 plus the amount?
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand?
Yeah. Was the contract with SINTAS when? Do you know when that contract starts and when, when it ends?
PACER was, PACER, we signed the-
Well, SINTAS is a uniform.
I'm sorry?
SINTAS is uniforms.
Yes, is that what it is, it's SINTAS?
It's on there, too. Butler Fairman and SINTAS.
Okay, Butler Fair, Butler Fairman, we, the contract with them was $29,000 and some change. We paid 10% of that, so the balance will be coming, should be coming due. And I do know from what they said down there that SINTAS increased their prices. Okay, but that's all I know, they didn't give me, when we talked about that, didn't get any specifics.
Well, what I'd like to see happen is, since we go from January 1 to December 31, is that the contracts, they don't change their prices from January 31st to December 31st, so that we don't have to deal with additionals.
Well, I, I understand that, Mike, but SINTAS increased their prices. I looked at their contract earlier in the year, but I wasn't happy with it. Our director seeking legal advice, I'll have to say, they have a rather ironclad contract. Because I, I would have tried to look for someone else in the highway department who would have gone along with that. And, but there was no way, the way the contract's written, to break it without going, I think, to arbitration and a lot of those things. There's just, there's just no simple contacting them 30 days before you want to get out of the contract and get out of it. You can't do that, the way it's written. So, now, I haven't looked at the specific. All I know is that either Angie or Richard Wong told me that they had increased their prices.
Do we know how much?
No.
I'm just, this is part of what we're, we face, we're here, you know it, we all know it, that these things hit us and we don't budget for it. And we can get it, so they could talk to them and say, can you go from January 1st to the next December 31st and agree that you're not going to change your prices? And then, if you're going to raise them, talk to us in December. I mean, I don't think it's an unfair thing to ask, I don't think it's unreasonable.
Well, what I'll do then is, I will-
I'm not trying to put you in the spot, but I think-
No, it's, it's okay, I don't, I don't care. We'll, I'll get the contract, I think I still have a copy of it, if not, I'll give it to Jane. And we'll, we'll contact them. In the meantime, I'll run a copy to our legal counsel, so he knows what it says and everything like that. He may have, he may have some suggestions.
And I think, obviously, I'm a bit of a choice. If we got a contract with them and they're raising prices, we're probably, not much we can do about it.
Well, if, if that's, if that's what the counsel feels, I suggest that you not approve that part tonight, wait till your next meeting. And meantime, that gives me time to look at it, and I'll try to let you know in advance to meeting what they say.
I mean, I, my preference would be to know kind of what the two dollar amounts are, they're asking, what's Butler Fairman's fee and what's SINTAS's fee? What are they asking, is it $10,000, is it $100 bucks, you know? I, I don't know.
Okay, without looking at what you're looking at, I don't know what to pump out of it. Okay, Butler Fairman's fee.
It doesn't give a lot of great detail.
It doesn't, it doesn't give a lot, it doesn't have it broken down, how much is Butler?
Okay, I see what you're saying.
You said you already paid Butler?
No.
10%?
10%, 10%. If you'll, if you'll put this off for a minute, let me see if I can find my PACER contract, and I can tell you exactly how much that is.
Okay, well, with that, we'll go to, well, Frank, Jimmy said he wanted to bring something up?
Yes.
Right here. I'm looking at the minutes here, new business last month was 911 chairs. And it said it's tabled. I'm sorry? 911 chairs.
They requested that, you removed-
Okay, so then we tabled that, so we need to act on that.
No, they, they had us remove it all together, she was going to-
Okay.
Rather than request permission to buy it, see if she could get some-
Okay.
From like a government surplus, I believe she said.
Okay, I'm going to make motion that we remove Mike Winters, President of the Fayette County Council.
I'll second that.
The reason I've done this was, a couple weeks ago, there was a meeting. Mike had a meeting with taxpayers and all, this is not a one-man council, there are seven people in this council. I think he was disrespected by not being asked to be there.
Yeah, I didn't know about it until the paper, and I didn't even know about it until Jim called me and said it was in the paper.
Well, it wasn't a meeting specifically for just myself and taxpayers. I felt I didn't need to drag you guys into it, and I asked Dale as the Vice President. Dale did not want to be a part of it, he said he, and so I figured, well, if I drag you guys into it, it was probably an error on my part. But it was not as meant, meant, meant as disrespect, it was meant to not have to make you sit through something that I didn't know how, if it was going to be there.
I saw the point, the point is, we should have been, we should have been notified other than the paper, that you were going to hold this with people.
I think that, if I remember right, the motion isn't going to carry, I mean, it's not legal on that, but you can make the motion, but I don't think it means anything at this point. It doesn't matter to me. But I think that there's other procedures you have to go through before that, it's not just simply making a motion.
I called the Indiana Council, and they said we could do it this way.
No, I'll defer to legal. It doesn't matter to me, whatever you guys want to do.
I see we have a roll call vote.
Is there any more discussion?
I, I don't have any more discussion, that's all I want to say.
I have some discussion, and I think that it's not the best thing for us to do, especially beginning at nine o'clock in the morning, we're going to start in on the budget. Mike has worked on the Budget Committee with Dale and-
So he's still on the budget, he's still on the Budget Committee?
Mm-hmm.
He's not taken on, we're not taking him on, right?
No, I didn't suggest that, that we were, but as, as President, the President, I think, plays a significant role in helping us get through the budget. And I think it would be very poor timing on our part to make a change like this.
Well, Dale will be President, he was on line.
Now, wait a minute here, wait, I'm not volunteering for anything in this night. You, okay, let's get this straight. You guys are obviously upset because Mike had his public meeting and no one was notified. That's all, I'm, I'm glad, I didn't have any problem with meeting, I think. Other than, other than we were going to discuss about budget savings after Rick made his hour-long comments.
Budget savings?
Huh?
We're talking about-
The meet, Rick, I- The over hour-long comments that he was making, which didn't have much to say about the savings, necessarily, but, but anyway. Yeah, okay, so, I would rather you guys do your fighting off camera, to tell you the truth. Now, you-
Well, we have to do it on a meet.
Dale has to be on a public meeting, you know that very well, it does.
Well, maybe, maybe not. But now, you older boys, you, you've been around a long time, and you know how things are supposed to work. And Mikey here, he hasn't been at it as long as you guys have, and maybe if you'll take it easy on him, he'll promise not to do it anymore. Everything will be okay.
Who are you talking about? Now, who are you talking about, the older boys? Honestly, I didn't really want to ask Frank, I didn't ask any other commissioners, I didn't want to involve a whole lot of people and make this a big, long thing. And that's what my thought was. So, you know, I, I agree with Dale, if you had a problem, probably should just talk to me aside and say, hey, this is my thoughts. And I wouldn't hold it against you. But nobody's approached me, nobody's talked to me about it, and this is the first I'm hearing about it. I mean, I think I mentioned to Shirley, I mentioned to Dale, that there was probably a little regret by part after seeing you guys show up, I thought, well, I was probably screwed up there. So, the motion was made, Frank, on your miss, to remove me as a President. Motion on the floor, this is consecutive. Is there any further discussion?
Guys, are you sure you want to go through this action? I mean, really, this is really incomparable for everyone.
I think it's like cutting off your nose to spite your face.
Or vice versa, Paige, Shirley.
Pardon?
Or vice versa, Paige, you'll have to deal.
That's, that's true, and this is a time to let people know, that's my opinion.
Before we do this, what time's the motion, yours is nine?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine. So what are you going to do, let's say, if, if your motion, if your motion passes, what happens then? You step up and assume the presidency.
Who you say?
And complete, after, and complete the year. Isn't that, as the President of the United States lays office, who comes in charge? Who comes in charge of Dale? Maybe, I think. Well, maybe, maybe. Now, you're, you're making that assumption, is that statutory? Yes. And then after him comes the Speaker of the House. No, I'm talking about this council. Well, that's, I can't say positively, but I guess it follows the same rules everywhere. As President, he comes in the next, of course, in charge. We could ask our attorney that, would that be the way?
That's something I'll have to look into. Yeah. I'll have to pop my head.
You know, if that's what you guys feel, you know, I'll gladly step down in October, get through the budget hearings. You guys can figure out what you want to do, it doesn't matter to me. It's like, not like, I just know my resume or anything, so. Roll call vote?
Roll call.
I mean, everybody said their piece, so that's all, I don't want to make a long row of that, so roll call vote.
I'm sorry?
Do you want a roll call vote? There's been a motion made, there's a second, there's no discussion, you want a roll call vote?
Okay, then we need to roll call it, Dale?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Shirley?
No.
Mark?
Yes.
Other mark?
I understand.
So we have three yeses, two noes, and an abstention?
I'll vote no. I don't know if he's allowed to vote, why not? I don't know, I'm just asking a question.
There's a lot of things we don't know about.
There's attorney, you see, he doesn't know either.
That's something I'll look into.
I think, I guess I would have been a little better prepared with this, to talk to the attorney first, if I know what he can and can't do. Rather than just kind of come in here and spitballing it.
I am not too sure he can vote.
I believe he should vote, he can and should.
I think he's got, I think he's got woke.
What is it, three?
Three.
See you in the morning.
See you in the morning. Mike, it's over with.
Mike, three. You stay.
Stay.
Dead issue.
Okay, Frank.
Nice to you. My file has everything except the contract. I got all the roads and some emails. However, Diana called her daughter, and 26, roughly 26,000, need a little bit more of that, is for the PACER. It's also, money's there for the dumpsters, where we've torn down part of the old highway building that we have. And the balance of that is for SINTAS, which they're paying $411, I think, a month now for that.
A week.
I'm sorry?
A week?
I don't know what she knows, what's about it?
She called her daughter.
So, what's it going to, what's-
I'm sorry?
What's it, what's it going to now, or what was it?
Mike, I don't know without the figure, without the contract from here, I can't give you specifics.
You're going to have to forgive me, Frank, I'm a little distracted right now.
I can't, I can't give you specifics without the contract from here, talking to them.
Well, what's the council's desire to do in this? Your uniforms, your contracts has, has increased in the middle of the year, is that, is that what you're saying, Frank? On that, is that uniforms?
I'm sorry?
That's uniforms, isn't it?
SINTAS, yes. From, from what I, from what I was told, yes, they had, they had a price increase.
It has increased.
And, and the highway department is not happy about it. But as I said, they, I looked into this contract, I believe last year or early this year, I think it was February or so. And we simply, it's a pretty good contract from what our legal vice told me at the time. Now, uh, when the contract is up, given, uh, and they, they've had some problems, but the problems require mediation or arbitration, well, I've forgotten which, okay? The way it's written into the contract. So there's no, there's not gonna be, uh, any exiting the contract because of malfeasance or lack of proper work on their part. So they've had a price increase. I don't know the specifics about it. They've had a better offer once before. And, uh, because the contract was written the way it was, they, they did not go with another company. So, uh...
Is, is everybody required for a uniform down there? This is a uniform company, right?
It's a uniform company, yes. They, they, they clean, they clean the, the shirts and, and I don't know if they do trousers and stuff, too. I really don't know.
Is it required to have uniforms?
And, and they take care of the, uh, the names and the monogramming and all that kind of stuff. Not monogramming, but the name tags and everything.
So their t-shirts got, got their monogramming on them or whatever they have on, right?
Their t-shirt? Oh, you mean their, their work shirts? What are their work shirts?
Six one... Is this not part of your...
They've got a button-down, I think, a, a button-down shirt. I think it's...
Is that, is that all they have? Is just the shirts as part of their...
Mark, I don't know. You're, you're asking me for minutia and I, I don't, I don't have that information.
He doesn't have the contract.
Is that with our contract with the, the Highway Department or their contract, does it say they have to have uniforms?
That is, I don't know.
If they don't have to have, then we, we should have to get it. Can we delay this to the next meeting? I'd like to more information on this. I'd like to see when the length of the contract is, from what date to what date? What the hell that was worded? I mean, were they allowed to have increases in the middle of the year like this? Is that part of the contract?
That's reasonable.
Okay.
Any other questions to me about any...
Table.
Table. Okay. Yes, uh, desire of the council to table list at our next meeting. Any patron concerns? Any patron concerns? If there's no patron concerns, we'll entertain a motion for, to adjourn.
Mike?
Yeah?
Mr. President, before we go, um, just as a reminder for each of the members on the council that there's, there is a community visioning process going on next week. I think received, each of you received a personal invitation from, um, Linda Fitzgerald back a couple months ago at our joint meeting. We've not had a lot of people officially sign up. And if you have issues signing up online, I would be happy to get that done. But with requests that each of you attend is very important. Have a say-so for what we wanna do for the next 50 years. It's kind of important to help guide the process in the direction that the majority of the people feel is, is important, so.
Is this the one at the Members Center?
No. One is Monday at the Senior Center. That's the 12th.
Oh, yeah.
And on Thursday, the 15th. It's at the First Presbyterian, um, Social Hall from 6:00 until 8:30. I know that's at the end of a long day, but I feel like this is something very important. Want to hear from the stakeholders. That's each of the elected officers for the council and the city and county, border works, commissioners, I think, other elected officers. From there, the requests will go throughout the city. And then they will take the, this community visioning process out to the different townships. So breaking up, I think, Posey and Fairview, for instance, and the other end of town, combining. So with some of the county areas, have the process go on as there as well. With the idea being in January, they're going to put together all the data that's been derived from each of these one-on-one sessions and see where we go from here. I think they've already demonstrated with some of the things that have happened here at the county and the city and the downtown area that things can get done if we have a passion about it and if we have a specific, you know? We need to make these things happen. And some things have happened. So I, let's continue. But I know it's important to have, have your input as well. That's all.
Just a reminder, our budget hearings starting tomorrow at 9:00 AM. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to adjourn.
Opposed, aye? Opposed, aye, or adjourned, say aye?
Aye.
Means adjourned.
Okay. Watch for breakfast in the morning.